Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. City staff, my colleagues on council, and all interested parties. I want to welcome you to our city council meeting today, October 24th. And right now, I would ask that we all please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I will now ask my colleagues to note your presence electronically.
Seven members of city council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have the minutes of a call meeting on October 10th, 2023, a regular meeting on October 10th, 2023, and a call meeting on October 12th, 2023. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
Second.
I would ask all my colleagues to please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker rules for this evening?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. Excuse me. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to the agenda item of unfinished business, item 23-318, UP-23-18. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution for this public hearing item?
This unfinished business?
Unfinished business item, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Resolution granting a use permit, UP 2318, to George Williams to operate an entertainment establishment in Suite 4012C at 4010 Victory Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. And is the applicant present tonight?
Yes, sir.
Sir, would you like to come up and speak on behalf of your use permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you would state your name and address, sir, you will have 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is George Williams. My address, my home address or the?
That's fine, sir.
My home address is 4446 Old Woodland Drive, Chesapeake, Virginia, 23321.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members. I am the applicant for the River Restaurant and Lounge. I am here to request your approval for entertainment.
You have 10 minutes. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Nothing else.
Okay. Anything about the building, the project, maybe?
The project, I started in March of 2023. It took me four months to do the rehab for the restaurant and lounge. It's 5800 square feet. I have occupancy of 260. I received my ABC license roughly July for occupancy of 150. The age requirement is 30 and above, and I'm trying to bring, have live music bands so that I can keep it, the entertainment for the community and do fundraisers for different events for the community.
Thank you, sir. To my colleagues on council, do you have any questions at this time for the applicant? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Williams. Thank you for your investment in our city, wanting to open a business. I do have a few questions. Your menu, could you elaborate on the menu and the hours that the full menu will be in place?
Yes, sir. We serve southern food and seafood. The hours of operation is Monday, Monday we, Mondays we close. Tuesdays through Thursdays, we open up from 11:30 to 7:00. On Fridays and Saturdays, Friday and Saturdays is 12 to 10:00. And then after 10:00 is more live music, that's when 30 and above.
So you, so if I come to your establishment at 10 o'clock, I can order food?
It's more or less like bar food. Like, we have like chicken wings, fish, fries, mac, onion rings, or quick food, not like dinner during that time.
Okay. And is that why, I know, I think at 9 o'clock, your staff, you won't have any staff that's under the age 21, I believe it said?
21.
Okay. So all the staff will be 21 or above after 9?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you for presenting this to us and just for the audience. It is hard to come speak up here in front of a room full of people in a council like this, so I commend you for even having the courage to come. I've heard a lot of good things about your restaurant, and I'm looking forward to attending it myself, so I will be in support of your entertainment and support of this. So I'm definitely looking forward to coming out and supporting you guys. Thank you for coming to our city.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Williams, I wish you well. The age limitation on your staff, was that something you put forward?
Yes, sir. I want more of a matured crowd.
Okay.
So that, and I always have security there at night. I never have a event or serving alcohol unless I have security.
Yeah. My question to the staff is that that's not a city requirement, so if he were to change that, he wouldn't be in any violation or anything, would he?
No, sir, he wouldn't be.
Okay. Okay. I just, I just want to make sure you had that flexibility.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Williams, for coming out to present. I've already been for the grand opening, and it's a great place. The food is awesome. I'm looking to go again. I was just wondering if you had any concerns or any problems with the conditions that the planning commission is recommending for this use permit to go forward?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I wish you all luck.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Mr. Williams, I did have a couple of questions. So on the entertainment side, after, after the 10 o'clock hour on weekends, how long are you going to be open until?
Roughly 1 o'clock, but I request that if opportunity exists, 2 is the max.
Okay.
2 AM.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions from my colleagues? Seeing Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I do have, thank you, Mayor, I do have some questions for staff. I was reading some of the conditions here, and I'll read one verbatim here. Says, "Without limitation, the establishment shall be maintained and operated in compliance with the following use specific standards set forth in zoning ordinances, Section And I'm curious over number three and actually two and three. "Noise from the establishment shall comply with City Code Section 24-255, unlawful excessive sounds." Now, some of those include noise, we all know what noise is, odor, we know what odor is, smoke, vibration, and glare. Now, I'm just curious how we are going to ascertain whether the vibration is in excess, and if it's in excess, in excess to what? What constitutes vibration? I know there are good vibrations, at least the song, as I remember, but that just seems real nebulous, and I don't know why we would have something like that in an ordinance that I don't think we have the ability to measure vibration or glare. Now glare, you know, those just struck me that, you know, Mr. Williams or any other restaurateur operating shouldn't have to be restricted, that they're going to be penalized or the business closed because of vibration or glare. And my point, Mayor, is, and I don't expect to answer tonight, I think we need to revisit some of that. That's certainly, I think, restrictive and a little bit weird to expect business to comply with a vibration or a glare. So maybe staff can, if my colleagues are in agreement, I think staff needs to get back and revisit some of these conditions.
I think we need some vibration in some of our areas.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
I agree, and we can have this for a work session because it's very arbitrary, and I think we have seen it brought up in certain situations, and so I'm all in favor.
Madam manager, do you have anything to add, or you'll bring that information back for us to review perhaps?
We look at, yes.
Okay.
We can revisit the ordinance section on a court that addresses this. We have no problem revisiting that.
You have the floor, sir. So when we revisit that and council just said we change it, that will also change the requirement in his use permit?
It's changed. It would, it would change that use permit, yes, sir, but it had to go through, change the ordinance so that we go through that process too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Williams, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve.
Hold on, sir. Let me let him sit down, please. Go ahead, Mr. Williams. Thank you, sir. Council colleagues, we're in need of a motion and a second. We already had a motion with Mr. Barnes, so we needed a second. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, I would ask my colleagues to please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We have now moved to the item on our agenda, City Managers' Report, item 23-342. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting summer food service program grant funding in the amount of $262,962.37 from the Virginia Department of Education and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on the item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23-343, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of $3,000 from Safety Town and appropriating said amount in the Police Department category of the FY2024 General Fund Budget for use by the Police Department for its 150th anniversary event.
Thank you, ma'am. And council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any additional discussion? I see Councilman Barnes, you have the floor. You do not want the floor, sir?
I was leaning with my hand.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second. Would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23-344, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting substance abuse prevention and treatment ARPA funds in the amount of $50,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund Budget to provide opioid misuse prevention, treatment, and recovery services.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 23-345, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. There's actually two to be considered. Item A is an ordinance accepting additional local staff and operations funding in the amount of $131,322 from the Commonwealth of Virginia and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Social Services Fund Budget for use by the Department of Social Services for the state-supported local employee cost of living adjustment.
Thank you, ma'am, and we are voting on item A. Is there a motion and a second?
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on item A? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, seven zero.
And now we are going to item B. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for item B?
Yes, sir. Okay. An ordinance accepting additional local staff and appropriate, excuse me, operations funding in the amount of $31,822 from the Commonwealth of Virginia and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Social Services Fund Budget for Department of Social Services staffing costs related to assistance with the Percentage of Income Payment Program for customers of Dominion Energy.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item 23-346, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are reviewing on this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting public safety answering points funding in the amount of $92,500 from the Virginia 911 Services Board and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the E911 Dispatch Center.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Is there any additional comments on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 23-347, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting radiological emergency preparedness funds in the amount of $700 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, Emergency Services to enhance the hazmat team's response capabilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Item 23-348, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of $1,000 from the FESCO Emergency Sales Company and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the Women in Public Service Conference in March 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically? Vice Mayor?
Oh, sorry. This item is adopted, seven zero.
Our next item, item 23-349, and Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of $2,000 from the Atlantic Emergency Solutions Company and appropriating said amount in the FY2024 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services for the Women in Public Service Conference in March 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to new business, item 23-350, boards and commissions. And Councilman Moody, do we have anything for boards and commissions this evening?
There are no boards and commission appointments tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We're now moving to our next item under new business, item 23-351, item submitted by council. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, this is a follow-up from our last council meeting, and this is for our city attorney, an update on the Pennice Point remedial recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. We have put together a group within our office to look at agencies to assist in this. We have also reached out to Dr. Cassandra Newby Alexander to begin that work, and we will update council as we develop more.
Can you provide us a write-up? When you say groups to assist with that effort, I just want to make sure we're clear on the effort you're speaking about. So if you could send us something?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
And the compliance review by the Commonwealth regarding Elizabeth Manor?
We have arranged a meeting with the department to discuss their advice on those issues, and then we will follow up with council after that meeting.
So the, there's been no assessment of the legal foundation for providing tax abatement and tax exemptions for open space?
That already was in the, in the letter that you provided to council, and the three-year look back was what you already knew about, and so?
No, 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 that's not what I'm speaking to. Because you have to follow up, that's, that's what the, the state said. Now, you have to let council know some direction as far as where do we go? That three-year that you're talking about has to do with non-conforming. There's no non-conforming here, it's still a golf course.
Right, in terms of?
If you're talking about the rollback.
That's correct. That's what I'm talking about.
There is no rollback issue because the golf course is not non-conforming, it's still a golf course. And so that's why I said if you could?
I appreciate that. If you're, if you could let me, you will get full advice of what you're saying, but the process is that we would like to start with the agency that gave direction first, and then make sure we're covering all of our bases so that the presentation is thorough.
Okay. You're speaking about the Department of Taxation?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And then the city manager, the disparity study that I see that that is going to be in November presented, okay? And the, I think this is the city attorney as well, the surplus tax issue with the resident that was brought to our attention.
You'll be provided an update. Initially, we believed that there was not sufficient information that we have that rendered her eligible for any further assistance, but we're waiting on documentation from her to consider those, to keep considering this issue.
Okay. And then my last, the last issue is the report back from the city manager regarding the ARPA card distribution for the teachers. I'm asking that the city attorney give us some advice on that because it was a 117-page regulation that highlighted certain sections, and I don't think that's for council to try to interpret a regulation, but we should, the question is, what's the justification for those gift cards?
Okay.
And, you know, I know we're not going to read through a 117-page regulation.
I'll read the 117 pages and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So before we meet again, the nation will celebrate Veterans Day. Here in Portsmouth, we intend to celebrate Veterans Day on Saturday, November 11th, on Veterans Day. We'll do it at High Street Landing at 11 o'clock in the morning, so 11:00 AM on 11/11. And I look forward to our veterans turning out, but also our non-veterans to celebrate with us, service rendered from, from our veterans.
Thank you, sir, for that information. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As we know this month, as we conclude this month, the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so, as we know, breast cancer has taken the lives of many individuals, but it is also affecting many people that are still fighting it today. In the city of Portsmouth, we have a very high demographic of people who live with breast cancer, prostate cancers, and other types of cancers. When you look across the region, Portsmouth has some of the highest numbers when it comes to cancer. And so since 1990, we've been able to fight some of those things due to advancements in technology with screenings and preventive measures, but there's still a lot to do. And so in a city such as Portsmouth, we have a lot of things that we call healthcare disparities. People who are in low-income areas, people who live in former brownfield sites, all of those things contribute to the health of a person. And so when I ran for council, one of my issues was to address healthcare disparity. I've met with, I spoke with the mayor when I first got on council to express my interest in helping to work with that. He agreed that that was an issue that we will work to, hopefully to tackle and help to bring some more awareness, but also help to prevent cancer and other healthcare issues that many of our citizens in this area face due to lack of resources, due to lack of access, due to lack of affordability, and also due to lack of insurance. And so over the last several months, I have met with many of the region's top medical and healthcare providers, and we will be hopefully meeting very soon to really begin putting in that work as we address not only the cancer issues, but healthcare in general. And so I just wanted to, as we conclude this month, just to salute the women and also men who have fought this thing that we call cancer and who are still fighting it. And so I just want to, when we adjourn this evening, Mayor, if we can adjourn in honor of the men and women who have lost their life due to breast cancer.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for that information. Thank you very much for that information. So, this is the fun part. So I have a couple announcements, and I'm going to start first off with this announcement. We were presented, the city manager was presented at our Staff Appreciation Day last Friday, and I'll stand up, last Friday with the Mayor's Cup. And so what the Mayor's Cup is, this is the Mid-Atlantic Region's competition for blood drive through the American Red Cross. And we compete with other localities within the Hampton Roads region, and I just want to let the citizens know, and on behalf of our city council, I want to thank all of the city staff and volunteers who participated in giving blood. Because by giving blood, ladies and gentlemen, you actually give life. So want to give this and show this Mayor's Cup. We won it this year, and I want to present it to you, the citizens of Portsmouth, to let you know we're doing a lot of good things in the city of Portsmouth to protect our citizens. Couple of other announcements. As you heard from my colleague, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, but it also is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And many of us, although may not have experienced domestic violence, we have a lot of our citizens who do. And today, we were able to have a forum that was sponsored by our police department, thank you Chief Jenkins and your staff, focused on domestic violence and how we can get those resources to our citizens to protect them and educate them about what's available to them to protect them from domestic violence. The other thing I wanted to recognize is Staff Appreciation Day. Last year, last week, excuse me, October 20th, our city leadership team and our staff all came together at Festival Park and the Atlantic Union Bank Pavilion to celebrate our employees. And I want to just take a moment to give our employees and our staff a round of applause for all the work that they do to keep our city safe, clean, and moving forward. You know, the big part about that was it really kind of took my breath away. We actually have two employees with over 50 years of service to the city of Portsmouth. Now think about that for a minute. Over 50 years of service to our city. And I want to encourage all of our employees to continue to keep up the great work that you are doing in our city. Portsmouth is doing well. This is our city, and we're proud of you for the service that you've given to us in our city. The other thing I want to mention is there's a young man over there. His name is Sergeant Major Clyde Toler. Yesterday, we celebrated Sergeant Major's 97th birthday. Now, he's going to come up and say something, because here's the interesting thing. When I talked to him yesterday, once we presented everything to him, I asked him, I said, Sergeant Major, do you have anything to say? He said, no, Mayor. I said, wow. So we'll look forward to hearing from you a little bit later, but I just wanted to let you know, and on behalf of the citizens of Portsmouth, thank you, sir, for being here for 97 years.
Yes, yes.
And that concludes my comments. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that there was quite a bit of media attention given to the domestic violence issue. And I just want to say with council, we are a legislative body, and we have the power to do more than just educate and give information. And I think that when we look at some of the root causes that you see, persons who are in socioeconomic conditions, stress that creates environments for those things to occur, that is incumbent upon council. When we're looking at economic development, that we start looking at living wages, making sure that we're providing equity in our contracting. And so we have to do more than just educate, but we have to do things, policies that will really help to change the quality of life for people. And that's when we will really start addressing root causes. It has to be more than just paper being handed out. And so I just want to share that because a lot of times we try to say things that feel good, but it's really within our authority. We have the moral courage to do it, to hold corporations, businesses accountable for how they pay, who they pay, and what they pay. And so I just want to share that.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes our comments under items submitted by council. We've now come to item twenty-three dash three five two, Report on Pending Items. Madam Manager, do you have any items to report on?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We have now come to item twenty-three dash three five three, Non-Agenda Speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach your speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light. Hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker this evening is Mr. Mark Godoldig Yutrowski. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and other neighbors. Happy Yorktown Day, as it turns out. This was the day that the Continental Army and its French allies defeated General Cornwallis at Yorktown. Thanks to Ted Lamb for bringing that to everybody's attention or everybody who reads his postings on social media. I want to say that I am gratified by the response to the remarks and concerns that I brought here two weeks ago regarding the changes to solid waste management. I am pleased that the city will pick up 52 times next year or starting November, the week of November 13th, bulk waste. I would like to see some more information posted on the website in that particular area. For example, in Churchland, our collection day is moving to Wednesday. As I said before, that gives me no heartburn. But I would like to know what the holiday makeup day will be, as that has been Wednesday's role for those of us who have our solid waste picked up on Wednesday routinely. I also think it would be a good opportunity to remind citizens of things that have been established in the past in the Waste Management Ordinance in the city code. For example, there are limits on how big a pile can be placed for pickup. I don't happen to know those numbers offhand, and I think that unless you work in waste management, most of my fellow citizens don't know that either. So a reiteration of what that would be would be helpful. Additionally, if the city should contemplate reducing the number of bulk trash pickups in the future, I want to plant this idea for future consideration. I think that it might not be too big a stretch to have it occur coincident with the weeks when recycling is not picked up, which would mean two weeks a month. The reason it would not coincide with the recycling pickup is it would reduce the number of trucks circulating in the neighborhood. So on a non-recycling week, when regular trash is picked up, bulk trash would be picked up. On a recycling week, you'd have the recycling trucks coming through and the regular trash pickup. Again, that's for future consideration. So turning to other topics of concern, I wanted to say that council should reflect on what a public hearing is. When citizens who come up to speak in a public hearing are cut off in mid-sentence during what sounded to me like speaking to an item at hand, and this has happened more than once, and being told that, no, you have to speak to the item at hand. I think there's a high degree of subjectivity there being exercised by council. And so I'd like you to reflect further on what a public hearing's role is in the governance of the city and the role of the citizens in participating in public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
I just want to say because the speaker started out by saying happy Yorktown Day, and, you know, we're living in some times where we have to be accurate and reflective in our history. And that may be happy Yorktown Day for a certain segment of our society, but history shows that those of African descent were actually fighting with Cornwallis trying to win their freedom from slavery because of his promise of freedom to them. And so I just want to say that from my lineage, it's not a happy Yorktown Day. And I want those youth that look at our council meetings to make sure that they look at both sides of history and that they are able to assess it critically and correctly as well as the Native American population. So you got to be very careful when we come in in public settings making generalized statements that are not historically correct.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Julia Dorsey Loomis. How are you, ma'am? If you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Julia Dorsey Loomis. I live at One Crawford Parkway, and I'm a clergy associate at Trinity Episcopal Church and a member of the local chapter of the International Campaign for the Abolition of Nuclear Weapons. Thank you, Mayor Glover, and members of council, for this opportunity to be here with my friend and colleague, the Reverend G.W. Thompson, and other members of the local ICANN group, whom I'd like to ask to stand. That's okay? Thank you. Our intention tonight is to ask you, our city leaders, to play a specific role in the worldwide movement for peace, which gained momentum in 2017 with the United Nations Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. We are asking you to be peacemakers here in the grassroots of Portsmouth, here in this time of world crisis where seemingly intractable conflicts, combined with the availability of nuclear weapons, pose grave danger. We are asking you, in the midst of your caring for this city that I love, to extend that care into the world on this small planet we share, where whatever happens in one part affects the whole. You have in your hands now, I guess everyone does, a document called the ICANN Cities Appeal. Through this cities' appeal, a city's leadership asks our national government, the president and the senate, to sign and ratify the UN Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, whose drafters and collaborators won the 2017 Nobel Peace Prize. It's important to note that the UN treaty does not ask for unilateral disarmament of nuclear weapons. The United States would not be acting alone. Instead, there's a closely monitored process. It's described in a book that I had one copy of, for multilateral dismantling of these weapons. All around the globe, hundreds of cities, city and town councils have already signed this cities' appeal. Cities like Washington, D.C. and Paris, both capitals of nuclear weapons states. Edinburgh, home to British nuclear weapons. Los Angeles, and indeed the whole state of California, which, whose legislature voted for it. It's the only state that receives more defense dollars than Virginia. Some smaller towns and counties have signed the cities' appeal too, like Asheville, North Carolina, and Nida, Massachusetts. You have the power, as elected leaders of Portsmouth, to declare our will through this cities' appeal to live in a world free from the danger of nuclear holocaust. Thank you for doing whatever you can to be agents of peace. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is G.W. Thompson. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm G.W. Thompson. I reside at 4065 Wendy Brow Drive here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm also a member of Zion Baptist Church, where I'm an associate minister there, and I'm also a member of Virginia organizing. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come tonight to talk about our role as a city that we can play in countering the threat of nuclear disaster. I love Portsmouth and have been a resident here for over 49 years. I commend the council in your efforts to raise the profile of our city and to address the many challenges, teacher pay, safety of our citizens, homelessness, economic prosperity for the city, mental health, just to name a few that face our city. So why should the issue of nuclear deterrence be of importance to you? There are several international organizations that research major threats, including the United Nations. Last year, the UN Secretary-General Antonio Guterres told the global body that humanity is just one misunderstanding, one miscalculation away from nuclear annihilation. Is anyone listening? What can Portsmouth do to impact this threat? We applaud Mayor Glover and the council efforts to push for regional cooperation in addressing the many challenges that face the Hampton Roads area. We all know this is a work in progress. The cities' appeal that we have shared with you tonight presents an opportunity for Portsmouth to lead this region in securing the future for our children, grandchildren, and ourselves against the threat of nuclear annihilation. What better legacy could we give than a legacy of peace? Last March, Mayor Glover, on behalf of Portsmouth, welcomed the sailing vessel, the Golden Rule, to the foot of High Street and affirmed its efforts for peace through nuclear disarmament. We are grateful for Portsmouth's bold first step for peace. Now is the moment. The world is waiting for the United Nations. The world is waiting for the United States and the other eight nuclear armed nations to act, to end the threat of nuclear holocaust. Portsmouth could be the leader for our region. Please take time to study the Cities Appeal and call on us with your questions and concerns. We request that you put the Cities Appeal on your agenda by the end of the year for a vote. I leave you with two quotes. "Peace like charity begins at home," by Franklin D. Roosevelt. And finally, from Martin Luther King, "The hope of a secure and livable world lies with disciplined, nonconformists who are dedicated to justice, peace, and brotherhood." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr... or Lee Smith? Lee Smith, are you here, Lee?
I'm here.
Okay.
Over there.
All right, take your time, sir. If you could please state your name and address, sir, you will have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Lee Smith. I've been, I was with the Portsmouth Police Department for 22 years, which I was very proud to do. And I want to tell you something, ever since I left the department, which was '92, I've been thinking about common sense driving, okay? And I have been thinking about it, I've been taking notes on it, I've written up a folder on it, and I'm totally sure that people that read this, whether or not they're going to get their license as a 16-year-old, or they're going to renew their license as a 75-year-old, that they're going to learn something from this, and they might save a life. It might be theirs, it might be another driver. And I can tell you, everybody in here, I feel like, has abused driving. I can tell you, it happens. I mean, I investigated enough accidents to be able to look at someone and say, you know, Mr. Smith, if you hadn't run that stop sign, the person that you hit might still be alive. And he says, yes, I'm sure of that. So common sense tells us that by golly, why don't we not just obey the laws, but why don't we succumb to a stop sign? Yes, if the stop sign's for the person coming perpendicular to me, do I know the signs there? Okay, if I know the signs there, am I just going to square it through there and drive through the intersection? No, I'm going to look to make sure they stop for that sign, because I could kill them, I could kill myself. I just want people to know, if we have a pamphlet, then I want you to see this, every word in this pamphlet, because I've written it up about speed limits, traffic lights, stop signs, everything you could possibly face in an automobile. And I want people to know that you just don't abide by what the sign or light says. You abide by it with common sense. And if you do that, you'll get a star in my folder. But I really think, folks, I've been thinking about this ever since I left the department, and that was a long time ago. But I really think that if you use common sense when you're out there driving that automobile, you might save a life. Might be yours, might be someone else. But I want you to look at it. I want it printed, I would like it printed, and you know what? I'm going to the city of Norfolk too, and I'm going to try to get them to incorporate this information. If they don't, too bad, more people are going to die. And I hate to say that, but I came here tonight to save lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. William Britt. If you would come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
William Britt Sterling Point. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of City Council, the mayor, clerk, and legal. Once again, our biggest problem in the city is crime. Once again, every time I attend, nothing's really being said about crime. I got a major problem. Now, we had a shooting, and you know, I know where and why, but things need to change. You've got the police department, once again, who's under scrutiny because of the shooting, who was basically somebody shot at them first, all right? Why is it that out of the seven cities, this is the only city that's constantly going after the police department? We have a hard time recruiting and maintaining personnel in the police department. Why is that? Because who wants to come into the city knowing that they could be held accountable because they're doing their job? Or they could go to jail because of whatever? It's just ridiculous. We need to go over and change this thing. We got a police chief who's here every council meeting, listening to what's going on, and nothing has been done about the crime in the city. Now, you guys, all you guys know that I'm a grandfather of an African-American young teenage boy, all right? Now, Jakarta got in some trouble at the beginning of the year. He was charged with two felonies and a misdemeanor. The court went over there and said, okay, this is what we'll do, Mr. Britt, if you would take responsibility for him and his mother when she's in town, she drives a Greyhound, we would go over there and put him in your custody for a year and reevaluate the situation, instead of what the legal system here wants to do, is throw him into juvenile detention until he's 18, and stick him into the penitentiary until he's 24, until I called somebody with the NAACP I know and talked to them in the legal division in Washington. All right, so I got a problem with that. So now, this is the situation that concerns me, and it's the genocide within the black community. And the reason I said my grandson is African-American is black-on-black crime, teenager killing teenager, all right? You want to resolve that issue, let's enforce the curfew, all right? You enforce the curfew, you pick up the kid, you prosecute the parent. You go over there and bring it, if the parent's on social systems, you take away those programs. If they don't love their kids enough to go over there and monitor the kids, maybe they'll love their kids enough to go over there and say, I'm going to lose this federal assistance, all right? We need to start holding the parents accountable. The courts have done that with my goddaughter and I, and I have absolutely no problems with that, and Jakarta's doing very well. He's still at a 3.7 GPA, and he went through counseling, his probation officer and everything, everybody's happy, all right? So this would attack that situation there. We got a problem here, and it needs to be addressed. And the problem is with teenagers, all right? We need to go over there and enforce the curfew. We need to go over there and allow the police chief time to go over there and bring in police officers, all right? The police officers aren't going to be recruited if they're coming, you know, every time you turn around, they're being prosecuted, they're being brought up in front of the legal system, all right? We need to have that changed. It's ridiculous. And another thing is, we're talking about nuclear annihilation. And one thing we need to understand too, is we have the largest naval base in the country. So hence be, if there's any kind of nuclear war, the first area they're going to focus in on, D.C. and this area, all right? So if they're going to be dropping bombs, it's going to be dropped in this area here because of naval base, all right? I mean, we got some serious problems. We got problems with this, you know, the gentleman with the nightclub. I have no problem with the nightclub. There's no good restaurants around, he's a block from my shop, all right? So I agree 100%. I mean, I think it's a good thing. Let's start bringing businesses in this city instead of running them away. Like I said, last city council meeting, I made a comment about vape shops, more and more popping up. This is ridiculous, man. You know, it's disgusting to me. Let's go over and bring in worthwhile businesses, bring in car dealerships, bring in car lots, bring in retailers, you know, bring in restaurants. Let's bring these businesses in. That way, it'll be a relief on anybody that owns real estate in the city, because the people in real estate, this is a veteran community. So all the tax basins put on the people who own real estate or own businesses, all right? We're paying the brunt of it because there's not enough business to support the city. It is a serious problem. But crime is number one, and like I said last time with Mrs. Lucas Burke, you know, her mother went over there and went to the extreme by getting this casino. Well, let's say, if they build one in Norfolk, and we have a high crime rate here in the city of Portsmouth, people are going to go to Norfolk. If they open one in Suffolk, people are going to go to Suffolk. They open one in Carolina, people are going to go to Carolina, and now we're with another dead horse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Yalanda Nicholson. Yalanda Nicholson. You would come forward, ma'am, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is...
Good evening.
Yalanda Nicholson.
Yalanda, I'm sorry about that.
Yes, you're fine, you're fine. I live at 1063 Hodges Ferry Road, and good evening, everyone. It's good to be here. You know, I had so many thoughts going through my head as to what to talk about, but the crime is, you know, present in Portsmouth. And, you know, one of the things that we can do to, you know, go old school, pray, pray. There's so many churches in Portsmouth, there's a church here, a church there. It's good to hear that there's ministers and church members here, but we got to come together and pray. You know, there's a scripture in the Bible, 2 Chronicles 7:14, that says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and he will heal our land." We got to turn from our wicked ways. You know, we got to pray over our children before they get on the bus, while they're at school. We got to pray for the educators. There's one young man that comes here that is a tutor, you know, a tutor. You know, get them to help. Reading is fundamental. There's so much wisdom before me, and there's so much wisdom behind me. You know, I listened to YouTube, some of the meetings, and one of the meetings that Dr. ... don't hurt me, Dr. Newbie Alexander was present, and Senator Lucas was present. And I was so honored that the mayor said, "We need help." At that meeting, you said, "We need help." You got to humble yourself. And then on to what Mr. Whitaker just, Dr. Whitaker just said, that you have the power to help change things. You can implement programs and follow through to make sure they're being worked. So I thank each and every one that's before me for doing your best. I thank the chief police. You know, on Friday, I got a notification on my phone that there had been a shooting, and I have a friend that lives at 1914M, so I immediately called her and made sure that her autistic 17-year-old was in the house. And her 22-year-old sent me a video of what took place. And, you know, as citizens, you know, you got to ask yourself, what would you have done? You know, the police were put in a position, you know, to fire their weapons. And, you know, all I could do is pray for that family, pray for his mother, pray for the individual that got shot in the beginning, the reason why they were called to the scene. We got to come together. There was a young man a couple of months back that got up and spoke about coming together as a community, you know, walking the streets with the police officers. We need some ministers to walk the street with the police officers. We need some mothers to walk the street with the police officers. We got to come together. It does take a village. So that's all I got. That's all I got. So God bless you, and may you have peace in your life. As the minister just said, peace, peace, I leave with you. He left us with peace. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Nedra Jones. Ms. If you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
My name is Nedra Jones, and my address is 4049 State Lane in Portsmouth. The issue I'm bringing forward is, I'm very disappointed because I brought three cases to the Portsmouth Police Department, very serious cases at that. One was fraud, one was for larceny, and one was for filing a false police report, and I have not received any support or they have not been investigated, as stated in the mission statement from the police department. The fraud case was filed in August 2022, and I've heard nothing. The case, I did hear this, the case went to Chesapeake Police Department, and they started questioning me as to why it sat so long and what were they supposed to do with it? They had no direction. The second one was larceny. The larceny happened as a result of my vehicles were taken, and the DMV Police Department, if you know, think about law enforcement, DMV handles automobiles and that, those type of issues. And they did investigate, and they found forgery, and they sent those cases to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. In turn, they asked me to ask the Portsmouth Police Department to file larceny charges. I provided the information to Lieutenant Johnakin, and he promised to move forward on that once the DMV Police Department had again filed, because they had to do it twice. And since then, nothing. I've written letters, I begged and pleaded with them to follow through. Now the case has been sent to the Norfolk Commonwealth Department, and they still haven't received anything from the Portsmouth Police Department. The third case was filing a false police report. This individual filed a false police report, and it was known, and nothing has been done. And because nothing was done with that one, then we had these other charges to come forward. So I'm just requesting, and I did go to the, I was directed to go to the city attorney's office, which I did, and Ms. Coulson was very good, and she helped me, and she, you know, she listened, and she gave me some direction, and I followed through on that, and still nothing. So I'm just requesting the assistance that should be given to these cases.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Can we have the city manager and the city attorney to follow up with council on this So you can follow up with council? Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Ed Joyner. Mr. Joyner, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
I'm Ed Joyner, Citizen Ed Joyner, 1411 X-9 Drive, Cavalier Manor. It's my pleasure being here this afternoon. Last month, I had the great chief on my radio show, as you know, my show goes all over the world. And during the interview, the cameras and the boards started lighting up, people started calling from all over the world, saying what a fine chief we had, and what a good job they were doing. And all of a sudden, I started catching up with Steve Harvey that morning, and I said to myself, with all those ratings and all those nice things being said about our police department and the chief, I need to do something. And I thought of throwing a party, but I knew Whitaker might jump on me, because the type of party that I throw might not be within the good standards of his faith. So it might run me back to New York, and so I'm doing pretty good here, so I think I better stay. And so I said, well, we'll go to the church, and we'll go to the community, and we'll do something in the community and the church. And what we're going to do is have Police Appreciation Day in the city of Portsmouth. We're going to hold it at my church, which is one of the great churches in the country, St. James Episcopal Church. We've been around for 124 years. We're located at 928 Effingham Street, on the corner of Bot, across the street from YMCA. And we've given you many great leaders here, including the great Charles Whitehurst and Tip Corpru, and those who were in education, you remember, W.E. Waters, who Waters School was named after, is one of our leaders at our church. And we could go on, Coach Savage is there with us now, we'd like to see some of you. November the 5th will be the day, 11:30 is the time. I grew up in Lincolnville. During that time, we respected the police. The gun used to go off at nine o'clock. A great policeman, perhaps you remember him, Mr. Herb Simpson. You remember Mr. Simpson, Mr. Moody? Herb Simpson would sweep through the neighborhood after that gun went off at 9:30. That was time for everybody to go in, which meant that the crime would stop all over the city. And we in the black community said that they was talking about crime, but we thought that that was just a signal for us to get off the street. Now, we loved Herb, and he went on to have a great career in civil services and the community. And those of you who see the parade every year, Memorial Day, that was Herb Simpson that started it, correct? Memorial Day Parade. Am I correct? He was part of it, okay. Wow, wow. Well, we appreciate it, and we respected the police during those times. Times have changed. And I, at one time, had my problems as a past president of the NAACP. We confronted the NAACP, we confronted the police more than anybody. But times have changed, and we must come together and stop staying on the police. We're gonna do a great job, fair, where we're gonna bring in some outstanding men or to recruits along with the NAACP, so you look forward to that. We want as many of the citizens to come Sunday, November the 5th, 11:30, present their awards, plaque, certificate, proclamation of resolution, mayor. Any members here present that have organizations, if you want to present something and say something nice about the police. If you have your problems with the police, we're gonna have another program later on where we can have you to come also. We're not gonna discriminate and leave you out, because when I did my check with the organization that I belong to, we have six coming to make presentation. And I approached 12, and six went against us. So we still have people that have their problems with the police. And as I conclude, I say, God bless this great city council. God bless the great city of Portsmouth, and God bless each and every one of you present. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Shaniqua High. Ms. High, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Could you please speak into the mic a little bit?
I'm sorry.
There you go. We wanna hear you.
Okay. I am Shaniqua High, former resident in Dale in Lexington Place. I'm not here to speak on anything beyond the training that we did last week, from the Tuesday, the 17th to the 20th. We were a part of a gun violence intervention training sponsored by Darrell Redman, the CEO and founder of Give Back to the Block. On behalf of that training and my organization, Boys Inc., as well as a few other organizations who attended the training in the back, I just wanna read from the desk of Laticee Assesms, as well as the team. "Today I am inspired, having just attended a powerful and engaging gun, I'm sorry, gun violence intervention training sponsored by Give Back to the Block, Darrell Redman, founder. The training was facilitated by the national trainer, Mr. Joel Miller of NICS. The training has not only expanded our knowledge, but has transformed our perspectives on the critical issue of gun violence and the impacts on our communities. As y'all know, gun violence is, I'm sorry, the crime rate in the city of Portsmouth is very high, and we are now considered, well, violence is now considered an epidemic. So this training did not only give us the knowledge that we needed to go into the neighborhoods and try to intervene as the crime is taking place or after it has taken place. It is with great enthusiasm that I share with you the invaluable lessons we have learned and the importance of our collective efforts to combat this pressing challenge. Throughout the training, we were immersed in the principles of trauma-informed care, recognizing the profound and lasting effects that gun violence inflicts on individuals and the community. We have come to understand that beyond every statistic lie lies a story of pain, loss, and resentment. With this knowledge, we can now approach our work with empathy, compassion, and sensitivity, ensuring that we provide the necessary support and resources to those affected by this epidemic. One of the most valuable aspects of the training was our exploration of diverse communities and the understanding of gun violence, that it does not discriminate. We discovered that the impact of this issue transcends racial and cultural boundaries, affecting every corner of our society. As a community-based organizations, we play a powerful role in bridging these and fostering exclusivity and building trust among diverse populations by acknowledging and celebrating our differences. The training also emphasized the power of the community engagement and the importance of involving stakeholders in our efforts. We learned that the most effective interventions are those that are driven by the community itself. By empowering individuals and giving them a voice, we allow their lived experiences and expertise to shape the strategies we employ. Community building is not just a one-time event, but an ongoing process that requires active participation and collaboration from everyone in the community, which I consider unity. Together, we can create safer neighborhoods where the sound of gunshots is replaced by the laughter of children playing in the harmony of a thriving community. In closing, I am filled with the gratitude for the opportunity to have attended this transformative gun violence training. I stand here today, along with many others who attended the training, not only as an advocate, but a catalyst for change. Today, we have the power to create a safer, more inclusive, and compassionate world. Let us continue our work with unwavering, with underwavering determination, knowing that our efforts will make a lasting difference in the community."
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mr. Reggie Gatling. Mr. Gatling, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Reggie Gatling. I live in 600 Block of Florida Avenue. I just wanted to piggyback off what she was saying.
If you could please speak into the mic a little bit more, sir?
All right, all right.
Thank you.
I got you, I got you.
Yeah, I need you to help me out a little bit.
All right, I got you. I'm a little nervous. I always get a little nervous.
It's okay. Take your time. No, it's, it's, take your time, Reggie. You'll be okay.
And I just here, I wanted to briefly talk about the training that was had on the 17th of November. It was a gun violence intervention training that was held by Give Back to the Block. Joel Miller was the national trainer. He had came down, taught us some very interesting things. And me being a person who do intervention, I definitely found it very interesting, and I feel like it's a training that we all should get. Through the training, we spoke about a bunch of different topics as far as how trauma creates senseless acts of violence, that just understand that SOPs and MOUs and just non-conflict violent resolution when going into the communities. I think the training was important. I think we all should get it.
You done, Reggie? Reggie, thank you very much. Thank you, Reggie. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler.
My name is Clyde Toler. Portsmouth proud. So I must say, male, vice mayor, sign the arm, right on up the line, attorney, and Miss Whitey's staff, and all the citizens. Good afternoon. I am Clyde Toler. Yes, they pulled a slicker on me yesterday, and I thanked the mayor for being there. He surprised me. But I see him pop up anyway, anytime. But I wanna say, tell all of the city council. I came here the first time, 1947, after I had a tour in the Army of Germany, Belgium, and France. Young man, I came here, 'cause I had a friend in the Army with me. He lived here, I didn't. So I came back again to Portsmouth as a Marine in 1953 from Korea. And I stayed here until 1960, stationed out there at Martha Point, Army base, and there was a Marine base out there, too. So I came back as a Marine. But I know half, some of your fathers, grandfathers, I know your grandfather though. I know a lot. This was a red district down here. County Street was a red district, too. But I must say to the peoples of Portsmouth, you're a great city. You just don't know. But if you travel the world like I did and seen things, you will be more thankful. If you've ever been in the military, you know, you know you out here. You have never heard a kid call his father. He's dying, he called his mama. Never called daddy. Ain't there some running? But he always called mama. But I wanna say to you, you do a good job. Lot of people throw little bricks and little stones at you, but you keep on going on. You don't pay it no mind, because they can't do no better. Because when they rough off, they don't win, so that must be you ain't doing, you ain't no better, see? Or you have to call it like you see it. But look, Hitler Day's coming up. I would like to see y'all come out and support us a little bit better than what you do. Now, I go to Virginia Beach, 'cause I'm in the Fleet Reserve. That's the Navy, Marine Corps, and what we do. Now, I'm an Air Force captain down in the Fleet Marines, so, but I represent you every year, ever since I retired in '79 and came back and made this my home. I represent you down there in that big parade. And it was raining so bad the other time, I came here, 'cause it was raining in Virginia Beach. I didn't wanna get wet, so I came here. And it was very nice. I met the admiral here and the mayor again. You turn around and you look, and there he is. But you better be careful, 'cause he can cut your leg off and sew it back up, and oh, you know, he was a doctor, didn't you? Yeah, he a Coleman, then he took care of Marines. He took care of me. He was my main little buddy right beside me all the time. But I served in the Army, and I served as a lieutenant, and I also served Sergeant Major. And it was all good. And I served a bunch of good peoples. When I mean that, I mean you and all of you. I served a lot of good people. Look at you here. That's the way you're just as old as I am. I might be the oldest thing in here. But anyway, I appreciate being here, but I wanted to say, who got them little chairs? I asked you about the bench. You got, but who got them little ugly chairs? Hey, hey, some of you women, what about getting, you know, to be up here in front of the main office? Them little chairs, white, don't look too good. You need to get some a little higher, a little better. So whoever got them, I think I saw them things downstairs one time, didn't I? So they didn't get no new chairs. Spend my money on some new chairs. I served with your mom, with Mary Harley, you know. Thank you for three sides in my yard. But anyway, everybody have a wonderful day, and come out and support us, Veterans of Better Than Day. Let's all have fun together. Thank you, Sergeant Arm, for all you do, too, you know, 'cause I know you wanna go home at night, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. Our next speaker is Mr. Leon Hammonds. Mr. Hammonds, if you come forward, sir, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilman. I'm not gonna be the dead horse and continue to be the dead horse, 'cause the horse is still running. Gift cards, they're still out there. All right, that's all I'm gonna say about that. All right, I understand we're gonna do a little work on the High Street corridor. Gonna revitalize that. Got some old buildings there. Been vacant by as long as I've been living. I don't know why, but it need to be tore down, 'cause you can't be getting attacked by a elf. Next thing is street sweeping. Please sweep my Bowie Court, 'cause that's where I live. I haven't seen a street sweeper there in I don't know how long. Almost got grass growing up through, on the cracks. Okay, the crime situation. One situation right there that people don't realize that the shootings and everything else really, more or less, started, in my opinion, due to the draft being cut back, not really eliminated, but cut back. Because the simple fact is, the young people, young men, do not realize that they have to still register. Now, if you want to get certain type of jobs, you have to be unregistered also. But they don't know that, because the federal government's not gonna tell you that. But they, and if they were to continue the draft, you didn't have all this shooting going on, all these gangs going on. And that's really why we have this problem, in my opinion. And the thing about it is that they don't have anything to do. They don't have any disciplinary action to be accountable for. And the military does it for them. I didn't need it, but back in my day, I spent three years, two years in the NOM, so. But the bottom line is, it's a different situation there when you are in combat and somebody else is out there shooting at you, and you don't know what's going on. But the thing about it, though, is that really, you can't blame the police. They can only be certain places. Your parents need to take charge of their children, and all of them are not children. Some of them just old men shooting. And that doesn't make any sense either. It really doesn't. Because everybody, everybody, people need to be home. If you don't have a job, find a job. They got a whole lot of hiring signs going on. That's right. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Our next speaker is Alexandria Robinson. If you would state your name and address, you will have five minutes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. Alexandria Robinson, I'm at 505 Florida Avenue. Tonight, I wanted to speak to you about the Marcus Alert system. I think it's something that you all are familiar with. In November of 2020, our previous governor passed the Marcus Alert, or the Marcus David Peters Act. Marcus David Peters Act, which is a legislation that's nationally recognized as a best practice. We have an opportunity here in Portsmouth to be a leader and to implement the Marcus Alert system ahead of schedule or ahead of the state's schedule. Portsmouth is not scheduled to implement Marcus Alert until, at the earliest, fiscal year twenty twenty-five. However, that is contingent on state funding for the program. Knowing that the Marcus Alert is, or funding is varied due to politics in our state government, I think that there's opportunity for Portsmouth and for the city council to look into funding it as a city initiative, not contingent on state funding. A little background on what the Marcus Alert is. Again, it's a national best practice legislation that other states look to Virginia to model legislation after. Marcus Alert builds on practices that are evidence-based of the CIT curriculum, or Crisis Intervention Training, that law enforcement and many nine-one-one agencies already attend. However, it takes it a step further. It requires our nine-one-one agencies in the state to transfer calls that are clinically appropriate to our nine-eight-eight system. So making sure that individuals who are experiencing a behavioral health crisis are then connected to appropriate behavioral health resources. It takes the burden off of law enforcement. We're not asking them to become mental health practitioners and to, to carry that burden, which, as we know, it's not only cost prohibitive for law enforcement, but we have a limited law enforcement staff. It takes them out of service for extended periods of time. It requires that law enforcement provide mobile crisis backup. So in those situations where a behavioral health team does go out into the community, if the situation changes and they find that they do need law enforcement backup, there are processes in place, established agreements, where law enforcement knows exactly the role that is being requested from that mobile crisis team. There's a regional network that is set up to support the mobile crisis teams and that handles those contracts within our Hampton Roads region. It also requires law enforcement to develop a specialized response to behavioral health crises. Portsmouth has already been ahead of the curve in having opioid responses with our law enforcement and our Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. This is just taking it a step further. Again, Portsmouth can be a leader. We can fund Marcus Alert here in our city. It's a modest investment for a huge return. Not only, again, does this reduce the burden on law enforcement to respond to these behavioral health crises, but our citizens deserve the best care when they're experiencing a mental health crisis. I've heard throughout this meeting tonight that there is a focus on health disparities in our community. There's also a focus on our youth. Our youth are experiencing suicide and crisis rates higher than ever before. Portsmouth also has, as previously said, a high rate of health disparities. This is a small step in changing that narrative, but it's something that is supported by several best practices. Again, this legislation, first in the nation, we have a chance to move it forward. I've had an opportunity to talk with our CSP partners, who have been doing a lot of work along with our police department, along with the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. They are proud that here in Portsmouth, they have full support, not only by the council or city council, but also by those partners where other localities do not have that strong support. All of our city government is looking to move forward, knows the positive impact that this can have. My request is for city council to make this a prioritized agenda item and to fully fund Marcus Alert here within the city, not relying on state funding, and to move this program forward as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to thank the speaker for bringing this to our attention. We were talking about October, different breast awareness month. There's also Mental Health Awareness Month as well. But if there's consensus among colleagues, I would like for the city manager to get back with council on what it would take to implement the Marcus Alert program.
Madam City Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you. We're already moving forward on it, but I'll update council on where we are in implementation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you, ma'am, for speaking to that matter. Our next speaker is Faith Williams. Faith, if you will come forward, ma'am, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Faith Williams, Independence Street. Good evening, council. As stated, my name is Faith Williams, Vice President of Newport at Victory Civic League. I speak on behalf of our community at large and those who were able to make it here with me tonight. I would first like to start off by thanking Chief Jenkins, the Portsmouth Police Department, and our community liaison officers for their unwavering support of Newport at Victory. However, we are here tonight because our community has questions for this council, as we are concerned. Concerned with the connection of the Newport Community Development Authority, its pending lawsuit, and the interest of political figures in sitting on the HOA Board of Directors in our community. For context, August twenty twenty-three, our community elected a new five-member HOA Board. This newly elected board, the finances of our community, and the safety and well-being of our residents are being held hostage by the old HOA Board who refuses to acknowledge their terms have ended. You may say, what does this matter have to do with city council? Or you may say that this matter is out of your purview. Maybe, maybe not. But as a community, we have questions. The previous HOA president, Dr. Denise Key, touted her connections and affiliations with our city's politicians and public figures on numerous occasions in recorded community meetings and documented messages. Dr. Denise Key willfully appointed Kenyet Battle, spouse of Paul Battle, to our HOA Board, who at the time was active councilman. In addition, she appointed the city treasurer, Paige Cherry, for a brief time on the Newport HOA Board, to whom does not reside in our community. Mr. Cherry has since resigned from his role on the board. All of this transpired without a vote from or without knowledge of our community. Currently, Paul Battle, now ex-councilman, his spouse Kenyet Battle, and Dr. Denise Key, with self-proclaimed political ties to Senator Lucas, refuse to vacate their positions. Why? Why? Why when their terms have ended? Why, when our community had a legitimate and scheduled election? Why, when our community has duly elected a new HOA Board? Why serve in a volunteer capacity for a majority that does not want your service? Why would the aforementioned parties be interested in sitting on the HOA Board of Newport at Victory? We don't know. And that's why we're here tonight. Could the interests be related to the deals and the development of the land surrounding our homes? We don't know. Could the interests be related to the Newport Community Development Authority litigation? We don't know. But what we do know is that we, as a community, we want answers. Answers to the politics and the involvement of public figure interest in our HOA Board and interest in the undeveloped land surrounding Newport. We, as tax-paying homeowners, deserve to know. So what are we asking of this council? One, we are asking you to ask the questions that we're asking and find the answers. Two, we are asking for an update on the current status of the Newport CDA. Who actively sits on the CDA Board? When will they meet again? The last public session posted was May twenty twenty-one. A copy of the bylaws that govern this board. Three, the latest information on plans to sell, develop, and/or rezone the land surrounding our homes. And lastly, an understanding of the costs being adopted by the existing homeowners in Newport for prior debt on the undeveloped land, and we want to know about future costs that will affect our homeowners. So let's be clear. We are a four hundred and sixty-plus home community of hard-working, middle-class families. We are families who vote, and we are families who bring and generate wealth in the city of Portsmouth. We deserve answers. As our community is losing faith and trust in the city of Portsmouth, its officials' seemingly unorthodox interest in our HOA Board, and its ability to develop the community that was promised to us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Sheila Joseph.
Mr. Mayor, this is a question. Did our city attorney meet with the HOA?
As you, as you know, that, thank you for the question. As you know, there's current litigation, and my office represents the city of Portsmouth, so I would not be able to meet with them. However, I would recommend, and they already know, that they seek private counsel to address some of these issues. Some of your requests are for your request, and they'll be treated as such, so you'll be provided that information. However, we, the crux of your dispute is a, is a private dispute, and I know you all have counsel, and I think you should rely on your counsel to direct you in that, in that regard, but with respect to public information, this office takes that seriously, and we will provide that information as, as requested.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas-Park, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm always a defender of, of my family name whenever the name of Lucas is brought to the table. For the record, Dr. Denise Key was a former employee, employee at Lucas Lodge, which was five years ago, and I would like you to know, for the record, that Senator Lucas has asked that her name be removed from any conversation regarding Newport, and she has told Denise Key that as well. So for the record, Senator Lucas has nothing to do with that issue, and she has asked Dr. Denise Key to cease and desist from using her name as a political influence in anything that is happening with Newport community.
Thank you, ma'am. If you would state your name and address, Ms. Joseph, you have five minutes.
My name is Sheila Joseph at one thirty-nine Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I wanted to talk about the HRSD smoke tests, and I spoke about it the last time, and I wanted to give a report that from, on the ninth of October through the thirteenth of October, which was from Monday through Friday, I took it upon myself to go out and document the different things that the smoke test brought up. We did take pictures of everything in every neighborhood. It was about five neighborhoods I walked. And I said before that I do have back problem, leg problem, but I suck up my pain, and I went out and kept up with the people. And I just wanted to report that it was two hundred and ten houses that we went to. And I wanted to say, after that, the company that came out after we finished that, it was called Tri-State, I believe, that does the pipe lining. And I didn't catch them the first time on Wall Street, but they came the next day on Wall Street and Nova Street. I got a video of that from the time they started until they end. And they ended on that day because they ran out of material, and they said, well, we'll be back, we get our material daily. So I asked them, why you don't get your material if you got so many places? I do research on people. That's why I, I know a lot of what's going on. But I learned, my son and I went to the website, and it says from ten to fifteen years, if Portsmouth or anybody they do that service for, it is cheaper to put that in the existing pipe instead of dealing with the pipe of taking it out the way I asked. And I was asking because Congress Scott said it was more than enough to replace the old pipes that Portsmouth had. But I'm gonna speed it up and, and just go to the next step. When they have on their website, it says, if you do proper maintenance on this pipe that's going on the inside, it will last, I think, from ten to fifteen years. Then it spoke about if you don't have chemicals in your water that goes in that type of pipe, it would be, you know, lasting longer with the good maintenance up to date and everything and no chemicals in it. Also, it talked about fifty to sixty years it will last. I just wanted to talk about that and bring up to y'all attention that I'm aware of that, and I want the citizens to be aware of the report. And I also discovered during the time we were doing the smoke tests, and people came out and wanted to know what was going on, why the smoke was in their house and everything. And I thank God that the people took time to explain to them the best of their knowledge what to do to get with someone that can tell them as a homeowner. I look at, as a homeowner myself, like I said before, I was asking for help about the, you know, pipes and the sewage and the drain, and I was paying for this stuff, but I don't have it. So now, I'm feeling like you're working on that part, but not the way I was expecting to get it. The cheaper way in the black neighborhood, and when I went to Old Town, I might have to wrap it up or don't get to say everything, but I'm gonna say, I saw, and I have videos, them tearing up in the street, taking the old pipes, putting in the green pipes and the black pipes with the little rings like they got over to the casino area. I, I goes different areas in video what kind of products is going in the ground. So what I'm saying, that I would like to have the old pipes taken out, and they said, well, if you do that, you got to open the street up. So if y'all can get with me, and please give me some time to talk to me on some knowledge about this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please?
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
This is City Manager. Ms., Ms. Joseph has come to us several times about the drainage issues. What, what is the resolve with that?
I have a whole case file I could provide for all of the responses and all of the going out.
But I mean, is, is the water, I mean, I know this was before you. Is the water backing up there on the property?
No. I, I need to provide y'all with the backup because I, I don't want to do that to her right here.
That, that is correct. We'll, we'll, we'll provide the information where we can review. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Merle Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, are you with us tonight? That concludes our speakers for this evening. And before we adjourn, I would just ask that we adjourn in the memory of the people who lost their battle to breast cancer and in honor of breast cancer survivors. Seeing normal business to conduct, you all take care, have a safe and enjoyable evening. This meeting is adjourned.